Thank you. Our first order of business from our chief will be about our Brad Fox remembrance.
This Friday, September 13th, marks the 12th anniversary of Officer Brad Fox's tragic Officer Fox was taken from us as he placed himself in harm's way safeguarding the residents he was entrusted to protect. He left behind a loving wife, a beautiful daughter, and a namesake he had yet to meet, his unborn son, Brad Jr. He is sorely missed by his family and friends, as well as his countless sisters and brothers in blue. We are forever indebted to him for his selfless act of bravery, and we continue to preserve his memory in our hearts evermore. I ask for a moment of silence in his remembrance. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for those really great words about Officer Fox, who did give the ultimate to our township. Next, we have some service resolutions for some of our long-serving police officers. And first, Mark Lacy, resolution, whereas Mark Lacy has served the Plymouth Township Police Department faithfully since August 30th, 1994, and has therefore completed 30 years of service, and whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Mark Lacy and publicly express its appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that Mark Lacy is congratulated for completion of 30 years of service with the Plymouth Township Police Department, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Mark Lacy, adopted this ninth day of September 2024 by Plymouth Township Council. So are there -- I make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lukens. All right. Hearing none further, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
All right, and we have another resolution for another one of our longtime-serving officers, Officer Douglas Kopstik. Whereas Douglas Kopstik has served the Plymouth Township Police Department faithfully since October 4th, 2004, and has therefore completed 20 years of service, and whereas Plymouth Township Council desires to formally recognize the diligent and valuable service rendered by Douglas Kopstik and publicly express its appreciation, now therefore be it resolved that Douglas Kopstik is congratulated for completion of 20 years of service with the Plymouth Township Police Department, and be it further resolved that this resolution be entered in the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to Douglas Kopstik, adopted this ninth day of September 2024 by Plymouth Township Council. I make a motion that we adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you.
And from Ms. Lukens, thank you. All right, hearing nothing further, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Hey, we're all getting used to our new meeting room and microphones and all of that, so. All right, a few announcements. Plymouth Council met in executive session on August 12th, 2024, and executive session on September 3rd, 2024. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to -- oh, I'm sorry, yeah. For those who would like to leave, obviously, we don't make everybody stay the whole meeting, Approval of the minutes for the workshop meeting of August 5th, 2024, and minutes of the regular meeting of August 12th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
A moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments on the minutes or from the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the departmental reports and bills?
No moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Leonard. Any questions, comments from anybody, council or the public? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, moving on to administration, first order of business will be the final consideration of the Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance, which will be explained and presented by our solicitor, Mike Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Before the council this evening for final consideration is an ordinance of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, creating a Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance. This would be in the Township Code of Ordinance that shall be amended at Chapter 17, which was reserved, which shall be replaced and repealed with Chapter 17, Single Use Plastics. Chapter 17 is in several parts. Section 17.1 is the purpose of the ordinance. 17.2 is the definition section of the ordinance. 17.3 deals with single-use plastic bags and indicates that six months after the effective date is when this will go into effect. 17.4 is relating to non-recyclable paper bags. 17.5 is reusable bags. 17.6 deals with cardboard boxes. 17.7 deals with signage requirements, which also will begin six months after the effective date for retail establishments. 17.8 deals with single-use plastic straws. 17.9 deals with single-use plastic utensils. 17.10 is the enforcement, violation, and penalty section. 17.11 is the exemptions. Section 2 is the repeal and ratification. Section 3 is severability, ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this ninth day of September 2024. Council of Plymouth Township, Karen R. Bramlett, Chair.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance?
A moved.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council? I'll just make a few comments. We did tweak this ordinance to address some of the concerns from our residents. One is allowing establishments to reuse the boxes that their goods come in, basically like BJ's does, where they put the boxes up at the front and you can take your -- they don't provide any kind of bags. So the ordinance does allow them and others to use that practice. We also changed the fee for paper bags to 10 cents, again, hearing feedback from our residents. Any questions or comments about the ordinance from our residents? All right, if you can please come to this table up here, there is a microphone, just give us your name and whether you live in Plymouth Township.
Me?
Yes, you raised your hand.
Yeah. I didn't know what you were pointing.
Oh, no, you're --
No, it's a real quick one. So, Ms. Lukens, Conchalkin Road, Plymouth 12. I'm just wondering if that -- if this is written somewhere. What we heard was great, but I'm not familiar with the ins and outs of this.
It's on our website. Yes, it is.
Thanks.
And I think, do we put new ordinances in a special place, Ms. Weiss?
They're usually, are they always posted as -- Always posted as proposed ordinances. After that, they get codified right into the general code, which is also on the website. But I don't think we list the newly adopted, just, you know, they go right into the code. But I can just -- Yes, you can find it under Proposed Ordnances, yeah, under Government, right now.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? All right, hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Mr. Whitney, schedule of our upcoming budget meetings, please.
All right. Plymouth Township Council has established Monday, October 21st, 2024, Monday, October 28th, 2024, and Monday, November 18th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., as the dates and times, and Plymouth Township Building, 700 Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, Montgomery County, PA, as the place to conduct the 2025 budget meetings and to consider any other matters that may come before council.
Thank you. Next, announcement of an upcoming town hall meeting by Ms. Leonard.
Plymouth Township Council has established Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., as the date and time, and Plymouth Township Building at 700 Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, Montgomery County, PA, as the place to hold a town hall meeting to discuss sidewalks. The public is encouraged to attend.
Thank you, and we'll be meeting right here to discuss a town hall meeting to hear residents' input on the building of sidewalks. Next, an announcement about a meeting change in October. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, the date of the Plymouth Township Council's regular meeting for October, previously advertised for Monday, October 14th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., has been changed to Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., at the Plymouth Township Building, 700 Belvoir Road, Montgomery County, PA, to consider any matters that may come before.
Thank you. And another announcement, based on calculations performed by our actuary, C.B.I.S., they are recommending that we contribute to our police and civilian pension plans, our minimum municipal obligation, or also known as the MMO, in the following distribution. $1,434,630 to the police pension plan, and $469,691 to the non-uniform pension plan for the fiscal year 2025. And the actuary is also recommending that the township budget revenue of $920,806 for anticipated state pension aid in 2025. The net pension cost to the township for both of the pension plans in 2025 will be $983,515, which represents a decrease of $12,728 from our 2024 contribution. Next, under police and public safety, we have Harmanville Fire Company, Lone, Mr. Hoffman, Chief Hoffman, excuse me.
Everybody has a little short presentation in front of them up at the head of the table here. We thought this would be a good --
Can we just have your names, so the person doing the minutes will be able to --
John Hoffman, I'm the fire chief of the Harmanville Fire Company, number one.
Thank you.
We thought this would be a good time to visit with council, so again, thank you guys very much for having us tonight to give you and the community update on our Station 2 replacement plan. As you guys know, Harmanville undertook a replacement plan about six years ago, and you know, that involved finding funding, finding sites, finding what was right for the Harmanville Fire Company for the next 30 to 50 years of our existence. And what we have found is staying on our same site is the best option for us. We have been able to raise almost $2.3 million in grant funding. Township was nice enough to also match that 50% match for that R-CAP grant for us for $2 million. And we're at the point now where we need to figure out, do we go with what our Plan A is or our Plan B? And I'm going to explain to you a little bit about what Plan A is and what Plan B is. Karen, if you could, next slide. Right now, the photo on the left shows our current firehouse. That firehouse was built in 1952, with an addition in the '70s, with an addition in the '80s, all built by the members of the fire company. That, however, also handcuffs us a little bit on what we can do with that building for the future. As our architect will explain to you guys, if you have any questions, we cannot build up on that building. We don't know the foundation, we don't know how the walls were built. It was built on weekends by guys who just had extra time on their hands to come build the firehouse. On the right is what our current future goal is of our -- outside of our firehouse. Okay, Karen, next slide. This is what the side rendering would be, so if you can see now, we have parking spots on the side. Our idea is to go up to two floors to allow for more offices, for more sleeping quarters. As you guys are well aware of, there's a huge volunteer firefighter crisis in the state of Pennsylvania. The goal for moving forward is to actually have sleeping crews and expand that to live-in firefighters, who would live there for free in return for service to the community. To have that goal, we need sleeping quarters for those members. Okay, Karen. This is what the rear of the firehouse would look like, it would have an exit out the rear to where our current is just a flat parking lot out the back. The current firehouse would come back almost about to the end of that blacktop on our future goal plan. With that, there is an issue of the tennis courts or the basketball courts in the back of the firehouse. We have agreed that we will relocate those basketball courts as part of our plan here, and those relocated basketball courts will stay in the same vicinity, but just back a little bit further toward the pond, if you guys are familiar with where that is. The interior currently to the left, as you can see, is very, very tight, does not allow for a lot of amenities by the members. There's a small day room, we have a small mechanical room. We transitioned two offices at our Plymouth Valley Station to bunk rooms to be able to have volunteers sleeping at nighttime and during storms where firefighters can't get to the station, so we have that availability. As you can see, it's a very, very small firehouse, small apparatus room. It requires our tower ladder to back in off of Germantown Pike, which is a huge safety concern to us. We have, I could probably tell you 100 times where we've almost had a fire truck hit or a volunteer firefighter hit by a vehicle speeding up and down Germantown Pike, not yielding to us backing in off of Germantown Pike. The future plans would allow us to have drive-through bays to come in off the park driveway, in through the back of the firehouse, and it will allow us to have a double stacked apparatus room for future plans for the firehouse. As I said, this is a 30- to 50-year firehouse and planning, this isn't just what's going to work for the next five or 10 years. Okay, Karen? Right now, obviously, our second floor, we can't do anything on that second floor. Our idea on the right, and our goal, is to have four single sleeping quarters for volunteers, two full baths, that includes showers, toilets, and anything you need to get ready for the day, a big day room, and a conference room, and an elevator for ADA compliance. As you can see, the one on the left does not allow us to do anything with the current firehouse. So this would be our goal on the right. As I said a little bit earlier, funding right now, we did receive a $1.975 million redevelopment assistance capital grant from the state. We received the Department of Community, DCD, Economic Development for $200,000, and council has agreed to match that $2 million of what we had to match for the R-CAP grant, which comes down to, what are we going to do? Our goal is the one on the right, our projected cost of $5.57 million. If we cannot meet our goal, which right now financially we cannot, we would have to scale back the firehouse design, and scaling it back, I will show you in a minute, would take it to about $4.3, it's called $4.3 million, which is within our budget. However, I will show you, it's not what we need, it's not what I would recommend to you as the fire chief. That would be, number one, the right thing for our community, the right thing for our volunteer firefighters, the right thing for our career firefighters, it's not the right thing for the emergency services. Okay, Karen? As we lie today, Plan B, which would be our optional, would be the one on the left for our first floor design. So we would lose everything on the left-hand side coming forward, we would only have a basic back room, which mirrors the same exact layout as we have today, with a little extra offices, which they would be bunk rooms. So right there with this firehouse, we are not increasing our footprint only to the back, but on the interior of the firehouse, we're not gaining anything than what we currently have today. And we know what we have today doesn't work. Our suggested and our goal first floor is to the right, which you saw earlier. We have a gym for the members to be able to have fitness, we have office space, we have an engineering room, we have a washer dryer, SCBA room, we have a radio room to run emergencies, you know, our 100-year storms are more and more, so we have to run an incident command out of our firehouse. It's not just me sitting in a car, running to fire call to fire call, that doesn't manage a scene very well when we have 30 to 40 fire calls stacked waiting for our volunteers to respond to. Okay, Karen? Our scaled-back version of roughly that 4.3, as you can see on the left, does not give us anything on the second floor. Our goal for the right, again, is to have that day room for the volunteers and the career staff, the four single bunk rooms, a conference room, full bathrooms, we lose all that with Plan B. So I think at this point, our ask and our request is for you guys to hopefully reevaluate the loan agreement that we had, and to see what else you could possibly do to assist us in getting our goal firehouse, which I think will serve the community much, much better for the future. It will allow the volunteers, the career staff, to be happy, and that's one of my main goals, is to make sure, you know, the volunteers who are saving our taxpayers a lot of money are happy. And I don't think we're going to accomplish that, safety, I don't think we're going to accomplish that with Plan B. It really needs to be Plan A. And so we're looking to you guys, council, to assist us with that.
Are there any questions from council regarding the proposal?
If there's any questions, one of the architect from KCBA is here, if you guys want to ask any questions about the actual schematics or anything, or Dan from our committee is here as well, so.
Well, the scaled-back version would have no second floor at all?
No second floor. That would have to be a, what can we afford in the next 10, 15, 20 years?
Would it be built as a shell, or just a --
It would be built to be able to put that second floor on, but with no plan, no financial plan, to come up with that money. As you guys know, apparatus is costing us more and more. We're replacing the engine, it should be here in the next month, that should cost us about $600,000, and it's costing us $800,000. And if I were to build that truck right now, it would be $1.2 million. That is nothing for what our tower ladder will be to replace in the next 10 years, along with what Plymouth Fire Company has for replacement. The prices for everything, the price is here. When we first started this process, we thought we were going to be really good. When we got this R-CAP grant from the state and everything, we were like, yes, we got this. And then as we learned through the process, is everything just costs way more, I mean, I think you guys saw it with the township building, it costs us way more than what we ever anticipated. And as a volunteer fire company, you know, we don't have revenue, we're not billing for our services, we're volunteers, none of us get paid to do this. So we're really looking to see what else you guys can help us with, and, you know, really make this what we need for the next 30 to 50 years.
Scaled-back version without a second floor, you would still have the drive-through so that you don't have to --
Still, that was my number one as fire chief, that is my number one goal, is to have our volunteers stop backing in off of Germantown Pike. So that is a, that was a must that we did not cut from day one. That was our biggest safety issue, and that was our, you know, main goal of this entire process, was to stop having the guys on, the last thing I need is, number one, a fire truck hit or a volunteer hit on the streets. The last thing I need is, number one, a fire truck hit or a volunteer hit on the streets. Well, thank you guys for your appreciation and for your time today.
Really appreciate the information and we are well aware that building costs have only skyrocketed. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we have an announcement from our police chief.
Thank you. I just wanted to let our residents know and our council know that because we had to cancel our national night out due to weather, we looked for another opportunity to engage with the community. So we're having a back-to-school bash on Saturday, September 28th, at our police station. It's been advertised on our Facebook. If anybody wants to look at it, we've also invited all our brother and sister agencies from the emergency services. There'll be fire trucks, ambulance, police motorcycles, things for the kids to see and a lot of different games. So we're just looking for an opportunity to interact with the community since that was taken away from us due to the weather. So if people can remember, Saturday, September 28th, we hope to see a lot of people out there.
Very much. I, I hope a lot of people can make it. It's always great. Kids love watching all of the police and firework that gets demonstrated at, at these, at these events. So thank you for, for remembering all the kids and families. We next have under first consideration, an emergency police and fire alarm ordinance by our solicitor, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. This is, as you indicated, for first consideration, an ordinance of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the code of ordinances at Part Two, General Legislation, Chapter 14, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, Article Three, Emergency Police and Fire Alarms. This is essentially updating some definitions, including updating the definition of alarm, alarm device, automatic protection device or automatic dialing device, designated trunk line or dedicated telephone trunk line, false alarm and person and public safety agency. Many of these changes are to get a little bit more up to date with, with technology. Some of the old definitions were a little out of date. So again, this is only for first consideration this evening.
Questions or comments from council on this? I know that a council member who couldn't be with us tonight because of a family emergency took part in an emergency ser, she's our liaison, actually a member on the emergency services board. And I think that this is to make it easier for people to feel that they can, that the police, you know, will be responding rather than going through an alarm company, back to the police and all. This is much more direct. It's my understanding that the proposed changes are in agreement with our fire companies because unlike our police who are out and patrolling 24/7 throughout our township, our volunteer firefighters are volunteers. And when the call comes in, they have to leave their homes, leave their beds, sometimes leave their jobs and to respond. So we want to make it, we don't want residents to have to hesitate for the call to go to the police, but we also want to make sure there's some teeth in there for false alarms coming in. There's still penalties, but especially for residents as opposed to businesses, the penalties are a lot more forgiving if a residential fi, residential alarm malfunctions. So give a little more grace to the residents. But the businesses, they kind of need to get it fixed. The, the ordinance will be available on our website. So if y'all want to take a look at it, you'll be able to look at it in depth. Any questions or comments from the audience on these proposed changes to that ordinance? Okay, it will be coming back to us again for final consideration. Next ordinance being proposed for first consideration is some definitional changes on the parking of motor carriers. And again, that will be by our solicitor, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. As you've indicated, this is for first consideration this evening, an ordinance of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, amending the code of ordinances at Part Two, General Legislation, Chapter 13, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article Two, Stopping. And that word's supposed to be standing, but there's a typo in it, which we'll make sure we fix. And Parking. Essentially, we are amending Section 13-17, Parking of Commercial Vehicles, Motor Carrier Vehicles, Trailers, et cetera, on Streets Prohibited. And we are adding a definition under the Vehicle Code of Motor Carrier Vehicles. All other aspects of the ordinance stay the same. We are just adding Motor Carrier Vehicles, which is defined in the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code.
Questions or comments from council on these proposed changes? And this will just expand. As you know, some of our neighborhoods have rather narrow streets and parking on both sides can make it difficult, not only for our municipal employees and emergency response, like our fire, to get up and down those streets when you're parked on both sides. But this sort of expands to include more motor vehicles, the big ones, that park out in front of people's houses, especially on our narrow roads, and inhibit passage, even for a regular passenger car, but especially for our township workers. And, you know, when they're brought home overnight, we're just encouraging people, put them in their driveway and not out on the street. Any questions or comments from the audience about the proposed change? And again, this is available on the website if you want to read it in all of its legalese glory.
It will be after tonight because it, you've just suggested that it is a proposed ordinance. It's not there right now, but it will be since you've just agreed to put it there.
Yes, our fire chief had to leave, so we don't. Is there anything else, chief, from the police department or public safety? Thank you very much. Nothing under Public Works tonight. And keeping our solicitor busy tonight, we have yet another ordinance for first consideration under Engineering for First Consideration, a lighting ordinance, Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. And as you've indicated, this is for first consideration this evening. This is an ordinance of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, creating an exterior lighting ordinance. The Township Code of Ordinance shall be amended to include the addition of Chapter 25, Exterior Lighting. Chapter, Section 25.1 is the purpose of the ordinance. 25.2 is the definition section. Section 25-3 refers to luminaires and lamps. 25-4 refers to light trespass. 25-5, Lighting Level Guidelines. 25.6, Lighting Control. 25.7, Plan Submission. 25.8, Applicable Codes. And again, this is for first consideration only.
Questions or comments from council about the proposed ordinance? This is something we haven't had. Our lighting, this is when new businesses go in and they're putting up the stanchions and, you know, whether it's car dealerships or Wawa's or anything. We always had a, a person who performed and reviewed those lighting plans for us. That gentleman did it for decades and he sadly has passed away. And we are now, you know, having a, a professional company. And, and this ordinance will set forth sort of the brightness and the angles so that nearby residences are not disturbed, but still the businesses in their parking lots are safely lit. This will be, you know, after first consideration tonight, available on the website for anyone to read. Any questions or comments from the audience about this? Anything else in Engineering tonight, Mr.?
Oh, there's, there's nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, moving on to subdivision and land development, Mr. Whitney.
All right, I have a letter in regards to the property at 1508 Sandy Hill Road with AZL Development LLC requesting an extension until December 15th, 2024. And I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion for Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council or the ordinance? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, another application, Mr. Whitney.
Right, in regards to the application of two farms, as known as Royal Farms, at 906 Ridge Pike. I have a request for an extension until November 27th, 2024. And I would make a motion that we grant this extension.
Motion by Mr. Whitney, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Nelson. Any questions or comments from council or the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, next we have escrow release at 2622 Butler Pike. Based on field observation of work completed to date, our township engineer finds that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of $22,434.50 on the construction at 2622 Butler Pike. An adjustment has been made from the requested amount of release in the amount of $43,225. This was because of duplicate releases that were made in escrow release number four. By releasing the current amount, the total account balance in escrow for that project will be reduced to $198,788.2. I make a motion to approve this escrow release. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council or from the audience? Hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
Mr. Nelson? And the chair votes in favor. All right, and next of, from Mr. Nelson on Chase Bank.
Yes, I have a letter here from our township engineer, Lonnie Maney, about the Chase Bank property at 317 Ridge Pike. The total account balance for the project will be reduced to $63,928. I move to accept our engineer's recommendation and approve the escrow release of $379,776.05, bringing the total account balance to $63,928.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Whitney. Any questions or comments from council or the audience? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Nelson?
In favor.
Ms. Leonard?
In favor.
Mr. Whitney?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, under zoning, notice a public hearing that Plymouth Township will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM in the Plymouth Township Building, right here, by the zoning hearing board. The following applications will be heard. RJF Construction Incorporated on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance, Number 342, as amended, Article Six, Section 602.6. The variance requested is as follows. To allow relief with the side yard setback and the front yard setback. The homeowners intend to add an in-law suite to be located on the left side of the existing home. And this property is at 18 Traverse Drive in a B residential zoning district. The other matter before the zoning hearing board will be by Michael DeLuca on an application for variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance, Number 342, as amended, Article Seven, Section 702. F. The variance requested is as follows. They are seeking a variance of 2% of the maximum service, surface, I lost my tongue, of the maximum surface impervious coverage for installation of a basketball court. This property is located at 1417 Sandwood Road in a C residential zoning district. Any citizen of Plymouth Township or any interested party may attend the public hearing and have an opportunity to be heard. All right, next announcement of our upcoming events by Mr. Nelson.
So I have a list of the upcoming events for the Plymouth Township Parks and Rec. So the most, the closest event is the Halloween Family Bingo on Friday, October 4th. Then there's the HWP Campfire and Hay Ride, Saturday, October 19th. Then the Greater Plymouth Community Center, 10% off annual passes, Monday, October 5th through Friday, October 11th. Then there's the Cool Pumpkin Patch, Sunday, October 20th. And we have the Veterans Day Celebration on Wednesday, November 6th. We have Outdoor Vendor Market, Saturday, November 16th at CMS, that's going to be a middle school. Then we have Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony on Wednesday, November 4th. We have a bus trip to New York City. And I believe once you get up there, you can choose to go to Radio City or sit out on your own. That is Friday, December 6th. And then there's the Graham Cracker House Workshop on Saturday, December 7th. Breakfast with Santa, Saturday, December 14th. And of course, the Plymouth Township Parks and Rec are always looking for fall sponsors, so that's ongoing.
Thank you. And then finally, under miscellaneous, we have our Citizen Board Vacancy Announcements. The Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board has three positions open. The Historical Architectural Review Board has one position open. And the Human Relations Commission has one position open. Any resident wishing to serve on any of these citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to our township manager at 700 Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, or by email to Kay Weiss, that's our township manager, kayweiss@plymouthtownship.org. Okay, that concludes our, our regular business. Audience participation, if anyone who wants to speak, just please come to this table. Make sure the light is lit on the microphone there and just give us your name and whether you live in Plymouth.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Bramlett. Good to see you, council, tonight. I have a couple of things I want to talk about real quick. First being the ordinance for roosters in the township. Somewhere on Clover or Earl and there is roosters. And I've complained before and whoever's going out needs hearing aids because I can sit on my porch and listen to them all day, every day. So that needs to be looked at. Secondly, you're talking about the parking situation, especially regarding Plymouth Valley. 731 Clover Lane is, has five, six, seven, eight cars parked in front of their house, day in and day out. Young kids going in and out. It seems to be they're renting space out for college kids or something. And Karen, it needs to be looked at. I don't know what we can. I don't know what we can do about it. I know our hands are sort of tied, but it is a parking issue, and there is something going on over there that is not a normal household. And lastly, more especially, the, we already have a halfway house, whatever you want to call it, situation in Plymouth Valley, and from what I understand, 712 Clover Lane is now going to be another one?
Can you repeat that address? I didn't catch it.
I'm sorry. 712 Woodbrook.
Thank you.
We already have one on Woodbrook as it is. 712 is more close to me, being that my family lives there, my grandkids. I don't need strange people running in and out of the property. We already have that up the street where the three or four cars are parked in front of the house because they're there supposedly watching these people, but I never see anybody doing anything. They sit in their cars, God knows doing what during the day. It's not a good situation, and I, you know, I don't know what there's, we can do about it. Make them put up a six-foot stockade fence along the property line to keep their, keep them private or whatever, but something needs to be done. Why is this getting dumped in the valley and nowhere else in the township? So.
Thank you. And can you just tell me again where the roosters are?
I, I don't know. I believe they're on Clover or the next street over, up around the, around the 731.
731.
What's your address? Somewhere between 31 and 39 on Clover or the next block over. I'm sure you guys hear them. No, the roosters. These are some neighbors from Clover. So they, I don't know the exact address. I haven't pinpointed it, but believe me, you can hear them. You can probably hear from the township building some days.
It's a myth that roosters only crow in the morning.
No, that is absolute myth.
They crow all day.
Yes. Because I can go out in the afternoon, I can go out in the morning, it doesn't matter. I can hear them. And it's just starting to get annoying. I sit on my porch out front.
I'll have to check. I know that we're allowed to keep hens, but I don't think.
Chickens, but not roosters, correct Karen?
But not roosters.
Small birds.
Small birds.
I thought roosters was against the code. Chickens, hens, and stuff like that are fine.
Supposed to, you know, cackle bark or make noise, but yeah.
According to market research.
That's what we were told.
And that came from a random inspection.
Not supposed to be more than two small birds. I know that.
The two big things are that, is that house on Clover, 731, I don't know what goes on there, but more especially, the supposedly, my son lives at 7.
I'm 714.
714.
You're really gonna have to.
He lives at 714, and he talked to the people next door that bought the property, it was supposedly going to be a halfway house or whatever you call it, so.
Can we just have your name again for the record?
My name is, my name is Stephen Simpson, 714 Woodbrook Lane. I've been in this township for 33 years. I grew up on Clover Lane at my parents' house, and I stayed in the township and moved around the corner. This group home, halfway house, whatever we want to call it, has really got me and my wife a little turned upside down right now. We had a very good family. Unfortunately, his job had to take him elsewhere, and they had to sell the house. We have a $600,000 house in Plymouth Valley, which is decent price with some of these other houses that is getting turned into a group home. I had to deal with for a month and a half, two-foot-high grass. I had mice all in my house because the grass is way overgrown. There's no one to get a hold of. I look up on the county records, the owner, and it comes up with some person from Miami, Florida. It's actually in an LLC. So that does no good to contact anybody to let them know that the grass is overgrowing. My biggest concern is my one-year-old and my three-month-old to grow up living next to, I don't know what. There's no, no notification, no nothing, there's nothing, according to our zoning director and code enforcement, there is nothing in our ordinance saying that they have to let the residents know what is going in these houses. It's a business that owns the house. It's not a person, personal home, so I feel like that needs to be looked at, too.
Well, we do have an ordinance about keeping the yard, that, you know, keeping it cut and not allowing any kind of animals to be hobbled there. And then I know we have an ordinance that pretty much allows in any district halfway houses.
Other than Plymouth Valley.
But they have to meet.
So here's the question. We can't run an in-home daycare in Plymouth Township. It's against the ordinances or zoning, whatever, to run an in-home daycare, but we're allowing an adult daycare to be ran in Plymouth Township?
I need to take a look at, at the ordinance about, I know, I mean, if you do have a halfway house that has to be monitored and meet certain health and state standards.
Well, I live at 714 Woodbrook. You're more than welcome to come sit on my front porch and watch the Help, or whatever they are, fly up and down my street every day. They sit out front, they smoke cigarettes, smoke joints, whatever the hell they're doing out there, and the guys, the, the guys that, I don't even know the address, but it's top of, it's Woodbrook in Virginia. House has been there for years. Those guys are sitting out there in 99-degree days, and they bring water out to the aides instead of the aides taking care of them. So obviously, the aides that are supposed to be monitoring these homes aren't really doing their job either. So that just alleviates or allows other issues to occur when they're not monitoring the situations.
And you've already contacted code enforcement about some of these issues?
I stopped and, I stopped and talked to Steph because Jim was out on the road. Miraculously, a day later, the landscaper showed up to cut the grass, so I don't know if he sent a letter or what happened, or just coincidence that they finally showed up. And then I talked to, I forget his name, younger kid that does zoning, and he told me there is no, no zoning against this, in Plymouth Valley against the group homes or halfway houses, whatever. I have no idea what's coming in. Like I said, it's, I did some research from the county website and the company that bought the house and tracked some stuff down and got some information from my neighbor who the purchaser was, that they thought was the purchaser, and here he comes up as a CEO of this corporation that bought the house. So that's all the information I have, but we need to look into that a little bit and not allow that in Plymouth Township.
Well, we can look into that and make sure that any use of the property is permitted and being done in accordance with whatever state and county regulations there are for running an establishment that's to protect, you know, adults with whatever special needs they may have.
Is there anything that the township can enforce to have them put a six-foot fence up so my kids don't have to look at this, like deal with this stuff?
I don't know.
If it's a private property, we can't make somebody put up a fence. There's no, there's no.
It's a business. It's owned by an LLC.
Hi. I'm Kim Simpson, his wife. I think more of the issue is there's a pool and a hot tub in that backyard. We don't know what these people are that are moving in. They have mental issues or whatnot. So if my kids are going to play in my backyard, what if one of these people are laying in that pool? That fence will not let me see that or my children see that. That's not like, this is what we need, if this is getting put in, we should at least be warned about it or talked about it. Like, this is not fair to us. All the kids on that block, especially like my son, my one son, he's 12 years old. He tries to go out and play street hockey, and he can't because there's cars flying up and down the road, and they're all going to take care of that house up on the end of Woodbrook. It's not fair to these kids that are trying to live life and play outside.
Okay, and speeding in residential neighborhoods is definitely something that our police take very seriously, and I can see that our chief is making a note right now about speeding on that street by people coming and going to work and.
But it seems to be always the solution is the speed bumps. I don't want to listen to a speed bump of a car flying over the speed bump in front of my house all night long. So it's not, we're not going to solve the issue of speeding with speed bumps. I'm totally against that. That usually is the answer to everything, and it's not the answer. It's the simple solution for 20 minutes until people start just flying around them.
Okay. So we will see what we can do within our, what our code allows us to do to ensure that, you know, things are safe for you. I'm glad at least the grass was taken care of, but I can understand that you want a safe neighborhood for your children. Everybody in the valley does. It's a very special place, the valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. Anybody else like to address us tonight? Sure, come on up. Well, just, this is Ms. Lucans again.
Okay.
Just for the record, so we have someone who takes the minutes.
Okay. I'm just questioning the status of the crosswalk at Light Street and Concha Hocken Road and whether or not the light was replaced in the, on Light Street. There was a light that was supposed to be replaced.
Last email I saw from Chris LaChava said that they were going back out. He thought it was a PICO problem. I'm not sure if it is a PICO problem, but generally, as he said, when there's a delay, it is a PICO problem.
All right. I'll go down tonight and make sure that it's.
I'm not sure if they got, if they were able to get that fixed yet, but we know it's been reported several times to the lighting contractor, and that's what Chris said. Generally, when it takes a long time, it's a PICO problem.
Okay. And the crosswalk.
And the crosswalk, which is really frustrating, and we are staying on top of that, and I don't know if we have any later, any later updates. Do you know, Chief?
We do keep in touch with Ron Notar, is the name of our PennDOT connection, who specifically is working on this issue. He says he's waiting for data, and I think as of half a week ago, he's still waiting for this data. It's been a month, maybe more. Also, the traffic engineer, Peter O'Halloran, has been staying very much on top of it. I've talked with him on the phone and email, and between the three of us, we've been coordinating it. It doesn't do much to speed this along, but that's where it sits. It's in PennDOT's hands, and he keeps telling us he's waiting for some, from his own agency, he's waiting for some more data before he can do anything.
And this is for the crosswalk? He still needs?
Apparently.
But he doesn't, does he say what kind of data his?
He does, and I have the email. If I, if I haven't forwarded that information to you, I'll do it first thing in the morning. I don't know that it's all that specific, but it's a little bit more specific than what I'm saying today, so I will share that. I'm sorry, I don't have any more, and I'm just as frustrated as you are.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. Can we give the residents, the people at PennDOT's number to call them?
And their email?
I mean, at this point.
I think, I think we have Artis and a few other people have been spearheading this, and we have shared Ron Notar's information, Vince Carbone, I think is his name, his information, and I'll do it again tomorrow. Yeah, the whole, I mean, we do keep everybody in the loop with all the information and the chains of emails, and it's pretty much the same answer. And when I talk to our traffic engineer, he tells me that this is fairly standard, and they're being held at bay as well. I mean, he does everything that we ask on the township's part.
Mm-hmm. It's very frustrating that we're going on two years for a crosswalk at a bus stop for children on a busy road. So, you know, if you all have the email and phone number, feel free to nag PennDOT. Anybody, everybody. Anything else, Ms. Lucans?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, hi.
Hello. My name is Genevieve Boland. I have been living on Fulton Street in Concha Hocken since 2019. I love it back there. It's a really fun little neighborhood, and it feels safe with the exception of getting literally anywhere in town. In the time that I've lived there, multiple people have been hit. I've almost been hit. My dogs have incurred almost $1,000 in veterinary bills from getting their legs cut up from glass with me trying to avoid having to walk in the street, so I'll walk in the grass, which is also not maintained. I have pictures. It's not, it's not a safe place to be. I was walking one night, the night that the house, the night that the car went flying into the house. It literally could have been me on that sidewalk. I was walking to Guppy's. I think it's frustrating seeing the whole neighborhood zone for rentals, apartment rentals. So now we've got four more apartments on the corner, so it's clear that the township is willing to put more people in the neighborhood, but not keep them safe. So it's just been really frustrating seeing that and hearing that something would be done for like almost six years now, and nothing been done.
Are you talking about the Fulton Street or on Concha Hocken Road?
On Concha Hocken Road.
And you're talking about the trash and the glass that are?
I'm talking about the lack of connection to the rest of the town.
Yeah, that's, that's not an easy area to, to walk and to navigate. I mean, that's, there've never been any sidewalks or pedestrian ways on that area, and people do drive too fast. I think in terms of, of the glass and the trash that's on the private, privately-owned property, we can certainly get those owners to, you know, get in touch with them. Do you know whether it's on the steel mill side or is it on the other side?
It's literally everywhere. People just throw glass bottles full of literal urine and plastic bottles full of urine and drugs onto the side of the road. It's disgusting.
I live on a busy street, and I get that in my yard, too, but nothing as bad as on Concha Hocken Road, so. I know that people throw things out of their windows, and it's, it's bad. I have a dog, and you have to be so careful with glass for them.
Funny me? Come on up.
So about two months ago, we did go to Cliff Steel and had a conversation with their community person who is going to take our request for a sidewalk up to the higher-ups at Cliff Steel. I'm wondering if anyone from council or from Plymouth Township has been in touch with anyone from Cliff Steel to follow up, to find out if there's anything that can be done for perhaps a sidewalk that clearly is needed to connect Fulton Street to the rest of Concha Hocken and, to the rest of Concha Hocken.
We don't know yet the engineering feasibility and safety of that, so we're.
Is there a study that's going to happen?
We have, our engineer has been looking at that, and we have, we have to be guided by, you know, what an engineer says. Our role as a township is to ensure, you know, the health and safety of the residents, so we have to know that that would be a safe operation to do that.
When will we get those findings? Do we know?
I don't know. I, I don't, I'm sorry.
The status of those findings are?
I'll, I'll get back to you on that, Artis. I promise I will.
I'm also just a little bit confused about saying that you're uncertain about the safety of what that would be, because I think anything is safer than what it is now. So I think, A, it would, overall, having a sidewalk or having connection would be safer. And then, B, if that sidewalk is not feasible and is not safer, there needs to be another op, option.
Yeah, the only option really, because I live on a busy road, not as bad as Concha Hocken Road, but I live on a busy road with no sidewalk, and, you know, I have to get in my car when I want to go somewhere. I cannot walk on my street at all. I don't even have a shoulder or anything, and it really unfortunately comes down to your option is you have to use your car to get places and.
But that's not, that's not feasible either, not really. I mean, it is a short distance. It is. It is, what did I say, 300 feet from Fulton Street, from that stop sign down to the sidewalk. It's 300 something feet. That's all that needs to be done, is 300 feet to connect Fulton Street at the stop sign to the sidewalk that already exists. So that's, that's literally such a small area, it's not even the size of a football field. And I, you know, I presented this before and, and is there a way to create a path? If we can't have a sidewalk, which I know has to be four feet wide, can there be a path? Something for the, for the people on Fulton and, and Old Elm Street that will be safe for them to walk from where they live, under the bridge, connect to the sidewalk so that they can enjoy the, they can enjoy the bike trail, because they don't have access to the bike trail right now, have access to the bike trail on Conshohocken Road so that it's safe for them to get down there and vice versa for our folks down in the Conshohocken side to be able to go up and use the park up there. Because we have people, we have this beautiful park and a lot of the kids can't even get to it. The kids on Fulton Street can get to it, but nobody else can. And my other concern is the kids walking from the proving grounds, and I've seen them, they're walking from the proving grounds down into Conshohocken and they're, they have to walk on that street as well. And there's like little batches, clumps of them that, that are doing this.
Again, it has to be a safe and feasible possibility. And that is not for me to say. I'm not an engineer. I've walked that area, as you know, many times. It's, it's a challenging area. The, the one side, you know, you need the parking on the one side of the street and then you've got with, with a big drop off. You can't just, it's, it's challenging. And if it can't be done safely, you know, that we have to know first.
Right. And we have to know if Cliff is willing to participate.
And then you're dumping people, you know, at the end of a sidewalk and how do they safely, you know, you're asking people to cross Conshohocken Road up there, which as you know, is not a safe place.
Oh, we can put up another sidewalk, or crosswalk.
We've been doing that.
But...
So we understand that you want sidewalks that have never been there and...
They have been there.
At Cliff Steel?
They have gone, if you look at that, and I, and I mentioned this, if you look at the old, at the sidewalk, where that sidewalk lets off, where that sidewalk stops, there is the remains of an old sidewalk. And when I talked to some of the old residents, there was a sidewalk that went up to the steel company before the Blue Route was built, there was a sidewalk there. So that we are asking for that sidewalk, there used to be a sidewalk there, we're just asking for it to be back and then to add on a little bit because it, it was there before the Blue Route, it was there. It's not like we're saying, hey, this is something that's brand new, that's never been there before. No, it was and when the Blue Route came in, they took it out. So I don't know who you go to. Do you go to the federal government? Do you go to, God forbid, PennDOT and say, hey, you took this away to put in your, your big old superhighway and now we need it back?
Thank you.
So my name is Patty Smith from Plymouth Township. I also live on Fulton Street and I am a fellow sidewalk enthusiast. So I think something that has been really clear throughout this meeting is that although the process for the crosswalk is slow, there's a process for it. There is no process for the sidewalk. So back in March and April, you indicated that you needed to come up with a plan and that you indicated that they were conducting a feasibility study and that you were calling PennDOT for approvals. In July, that was again reiterated, calling PennDOT for approval. And then in August, or maybe it was late July, you said that that would be premature, that there was nothing submitted to PennDOT. It would be premature because you needed to do the feasibility study. So I am, I remain in the dark as to what the actual process is. It seems like there's a lot of back and forth. I think you're mentioning a feasibility study now, which is that what we were talking about in March and April? So I'm unclear on that. And then if it was, it's been however many months. So I, I don't know what the process is and that's why I'm asking you guys, because you guys do know what the process is. So I don't know if you have, like, what needs to happen next, right? So you're saying the feasibility study. My first question is, is that what we were talking about in March? And then my second question follow-up would be, what happens after that? Like, when does Cliffs need to be involved? When does all this need to happen? And then what is your input, right? Because as it relates to reaching out to private businesses, Artis can't be doing this alone. We've already reached out as a community and I have no idea if you guys have reached out. So that's, I think there's a couple of questions in there. I don't know which one you can answer first, but I welcome your thoughts.
Well, the engineer has been there, he has visited and that is the feasibility study and depending on the outcome of that, that determines what next steps are. But as you know, this involves engineering, it involves private property, it involves PennDOT. And of course, at some point, if it can ever get that far, would involve money to, for building, because it would be, if it's feasible, it would be major because of the landscape of that area. So the engineer has been out there and feasibility, you know, you don't, you have to know whether or not it's feasible and where to go next.
Right.
So we're talking about, we're talking about private property owners, PennDOT, engineers.
I agree that it's a massive undertaking, but I think that's why I'm asking for your help to connect with Cliffs, to ask for that. I think I've outreach, I think Artis has outreach to you guys about connecting with them, just to like start that process. And then also, again, is this feasibility study the same feasibility study that was being conducted in March?
Yes.
So then it...
Well, from, from our engineer, what PennDOT would say, you know, before you ask a private property owner to assume the liability and maintenance and giving up of property, you know, PennDOT has to approve that. We can't build a sidewalk along PennDOT without their approval. But we're working with our own engineer right now.
So then is that the feasibility study that was starting in March? Is that you were working with your township engineer? What was this feasibility study that was mentioned in March and April?
Yes.
Okay, so it's the same action item that your township engineer has been working on since March and April?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to understand that because I, that was not clear via email and it sounded like that was a new thing. But now that I know that it's taken four months for this feasibility study to be conducted, that's okay, I understand that. And then after a feasibility study is conducted, what has to happen then? PennDOT or...
Depends on what the feasibility study will say. I mean, I, I don't know.
If it's approved, what would be like the sequence of events?
I don't know. I'm not an engineer and I have no idea what it will say. I'm sorry.
I'm not asking about what it will say, I'm asking...
Yeah, the question's not what it would say, the question is if it says we can go forward, where would we go next?
Like, for basic local government community development project, what has to happen next?
After the engineer, I think it would be PennDOT.
Okay.
Before we get to private property.
Okay.
Because that is a PennDOT road.
Okay.
And we can't do anything without PennDOT.
Right.
It's taken us two years and we still don't have a crosswalk from PennDOT, so it's, that will be a long process, I fear, but we, we'll have to see.
And then my final comment is just related to, you know, your comments on, you know, it has to be feasible and it has to be safe. People are already doing this. It is already unsafe. You are not going to be able to change the behavior of local residents, you're not going to be able to change the behavior of people from Tees and Proving Ground who have no idea how dangerous the road is, who have no idea that a car has flown into the house multiple times, that pedestrians have been hit. People are already doing this. Anything that you do will be an improvement, potentially. Like, that's what I don't get. And even if we just had a barrier, maybe not a sidewalk, can you put a barrier that way to prevent cars hitting pedestrians, anything like that? Because that, I think it's, people are already doing this. Like, you saying that, you know, it's not feasible and it's not, it's not quote unquote "safe" is, is not changing the safety of the people who are walking there. And that's what, you know, whatever the result of this feasibility study is, whether, you know, you decide it's not feasible, then what else are you going to do to improve the safety for residents? Like, that's my question to you guys and I would just like to close with that, but thank you.
Okay, thanks.
My name's Nick Learman. I am Plymouth Township resident. I also live on Fulton Street. I'm not going to belabor the point, but I think to Ms. Smith's point, what we're really hoping to get from, from council are two things. One is communication. I've emailed no less than three members of this council about this issue, specifically, and this is part of the frustration that I think you hear tonight, about conversations that Artis has, she's had multiple meetings with Cliffs because that's what we were told to do by this council. And what you're telling us tonight, Ms. Bramblett, is that it's not the next step, that we haven't even, the engineering study hasn't been conducted, that was started nearly six months ago. And then, then we go to PennDOT, then we go to Cliffs. So why are we spending our time and energy on this, to do this? I've been emailing with Greg Scott, trying to get him to call Cliffs. So I think, one, communication and understanding that council, at least as I see it, as a constituent, your job is to advocate. So communicating, communicating with us goes a long way to making us feel like you all are working in your roles. Some of the responses I've gotten from this council have been one sentence after I send a three paragraph email. Some of the members of this council, and I'm not trying to make anybody uncomfortable, I'm not going to call anybody out, have not responded at all. I can sooner get a US congressman to respond to an email than I can some members of this council, which is a little disconcerting. I, I would like to think that, you know, this group here or some of the prototypical residents that you want to keep in here in Plymouth, I own a nice house, I'm married, I have three kids that are eight, one and two, and Ms. Bramblett, with all due respect, you can tell me that I need to throw my one, two and eight year old to get to the Schuylkill River Trail that's 400 feet away? That's not at all feasible, that's not the right answer. And oh, by the way, that's not even a realistic answer in that, not with, setting my own personal challenges aside, with having a feral litter of children. Where am I going? To get to the SRT, I can walk there in five minutes, the Schuylkill River Trail, I can walk there in five minutes. I get them, take all that time, load them up in the car and then we drive down Conshohocken Road and then go where? There's no place to park. Or then if I need to take the train, I know the number of us can take the train that can meet in the city. I can't get to the train station, not safely, not even during the day. God forbid, we get back to the winter time and it's dark 18 hours out of 24 and now that traffic is fine, you can't see me, much less my children or my wife. I don't think anybody in this room is under the impression that this is going to get done tomorrow or in '24, probably not in freaking '25. Got it. That is understood. I've been working in and around the government for my entire professional life. I don't expect it to happen fast, but what I do expect, and I think very reasonably, is for people to communicate and for our political leaders to advocate on behalf of their constituents. And I can tell you that through this process, the timing, the deliberate or accidental misdirection, the lack of responses leads many of our folks to believe that that's not what's happening at all.
Thank you.
Patty Smith, again, for the record, from Plymouth Township. Just as it relates to the meeting that was referenced here, the sidewalk meeting, what is that about? Is that about stuff like this or is that about something different?
It's about something that's about... New developments in things along those lines.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm Bill Sabey, Ashley Way, Plymouth. Congratulations on this terrific building. I loved this auditorium for my first visit, so great accomplishment for that being completed. I had a thought on the fire hall money, is the grants that they received have a deadline for when they need to be spent?
It will, yes.
Do we know whether it's months or years?
We don't know yet because we don't have the actual contract.
Because I was just thinking, if there's time before they have to spend the money, why couldn't there be a fundraising activities? You know, I'm sure the fire hall would have a great participation with the high school students to do car washes, bring the students in to kind of experience the fire hall, get a little bit of job experience, you know, just to connection with the fire, fire people. So it just seems like it would be a nice opportunity to take advantage of that during the time until the money needs to be spent and see how much could be raised publicly before they have to come back to you for, for the real money. So just an off, offhand thought. Regarding the plastics ordinance, what is the effective date going to be?
Always effective on the 31st day following adoption and then they'll have 120 days to, or 180 days.
Right. The effective date of the ordinance will be 30 days from today, but then the implementation of all of the restrictions begins in six months after the effective date.
So we're talking roughly effective October 10th or so and then six months would be April 10th, roughly, roughly, somewhere in those ranges. So in that time period that we've got, six months plus one, seven, I know the Environment Advisory Board had put forward a webpage, public webpage, to explain the ordinance and answer frequently asked questions. And all the other townships that have done a plastics ordinance have public facing webpages. Do you know when that page will be put up on the township website?
Oh, I don't know yet, but I can, I can check the possibility for that.
Is it at least planned? Is there an intention, intention to add it?
Check with our IT.
Yep, there's an intention to add it, meaning it's, it's not just going to be ignored? Do we know if the webpage is going to be added?
I don't know, but I can, I can check in the morning. I know that our website is very old and it needs work and we have a special committee ongoing for our website, so it'll be...
I guess even if it's the old technology, I think since we've only got seven months and the awareness, public awareness is more important than modern technology for that new webpage, I think it's still important to get the information out to the public as quickly as possible. And also wondered how we're going to inform retail establishments. Will there be a separate communication mailed directly to retail? Because I think, again, we don't want to have any misconstriction of this ordinance and make sure that retail understands their responsibilities. So, you know, putting the webpage up is one thing, but not everybody's going to see it in the next seven months. And our retail are the most important people enforcing this and making this happen. So I think a direct communication to them would be recommended. So is that something council can approve?
Yeah, I don't know how other townships have let their business communities know, but, but obviously we'll have to let all of our businesses, our retail businesses be aware.
I know the EAB put together several communications to the public through the residential sewer bills, which was one way to reach the public. And then we had a targeted communication mailed directly to retail and I know we narrowed that down. The first mailing went to every business that had tax inserts. to every business that had tax inserts. And then we realized that that wasn't really the best way to target the right retail group. And you guys did authorize a direct mailing to retail. So I think it would be important to do that again with that audience, just the retail, just to make sure they're informed of their responsibilities. So, is that something you guys concur with?
Thanks. We're, we're going to look into that, about how we notify all the retail businesses in our township, big and small, because we have big and small, as well as we'll have to talk to our IT department about being able to put up something under our current web configuration.
Great, thank you. And then, because the effective date, or the enforced date will be after April 1st, can we get an announcement put in the spring newsletter, just to make sure there's extra publicity of this to everybody to understand what they're responsible, they're, you know, the, just the reminder to bring their own reusable bags, that there will be a 10-cent fee, you know, that's the worst thing, is that when you first start with this, as I've been attending these quarterly Southeast Pennsylvania, we've got a bunch of other townships that are also doing this. I think we've got another township going, you know, towards their adoption in the next couple of weeks, that they've all reported that the confusion at the beginning is the, just lack of understanding. I mean, after a while, people get used to it and they start to adapt. But the more clear we can be on communications upfront, and, you know, get it out as many forums as possible, I think would be terrific. The big thing, I think the EAB may have suggested this in signage, is Trudifern Township found that the best option for the big box stores like Target and others were to have a sign at the entrance, so that when people got, before they actually entered the door, on the, on the entrance, there was a sign that said, "Did you remember your reusable bag?" And that really helped Trudifern be much more effective. So I believe the EAB recommended that in their... Little thing in the back of my head about the communication or the awareness of this to everybody. But I think we're good. So if I come up with something, I'll come back next.
Yeah, I noticed in White Marsh, some of the, like, the grocery store had a notice in their front door. I mean, not all the businesses had them, but there were enough, especially the ones you go to a lot, like the grocery store.
Thank you guys for adopting this ordinance. You know, the EAB worked on it for at least a couple of years. So we really appreciate your going forward with it.
Thank you for all the work and, and really for all the research you did, so that we could make decisions and communicate that research to the residents at the various meetings that we had. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it. It was great, great dialogue, great back and forth. Oh, and now I just remembered the last, last element, is when the new webpage is put up, can we have an announcement on the news list, or the current news, the, the most current, say, "Hey, here's a news item. There's now a plastics webpage." Can we put that on the news, the front page news?
I'm not certain about a, a separate webpage. Like, I don't know exactly what that means, but we'll certainly put this information on the township website.
And, and can it be also a news item, meaning in the list of news on the front page?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
Very much. Anybody else? Okay, if no further comment, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.